Alrighty. The meeting will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Probst.
Here.
Ms. Brunet.
Here.
Mr. Cowley.
Here.
Mr. Glonnik.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
I am here.
Please rise for the pledge led by Mr. Hirsch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God, in this law, wherever he may be.
Alright, before I go to number two, I've already screwed up number one. Would our student representatives please introduce yourselves to the public and the board?
My name is Evan Kreuzer. I'm a senior. Here because I want to be, I don't know.
My name is Mandala Mysak. I'm also a senior and I guess I'm here because I like new things.
Alright.
We have one more, the other three we're going to rotate through.
Yes, there's three.
You want to...
Yeah. We had three people, so they're all too qualified, so I couldn't kick one off.
That's alright. When the other one shows up, we are going to do the same thing for them.
Laura Vida's the other one.
Oh, alright.
So we're gonna, they're all busy and stuff, so we're rotating through it since they all want their characters.
Following in the footsteps of her sister. Alright. Item two. The agenda was posted throughout the district according to school board policy, published as a legal ad in the Superior Telegram, posted on the district webpage. A meeting notice was sent to the connection for publication. The approval for the September 8th, 2025 Agenda Open and Executive Sessions. We will need a motion and a second.
It's a great agenda, make a motion to approve.
Hit this one out of the park. A second. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right on. Item four, the consent agenda. Item A, minutes from the August 11th, 2025 regular school board meeting and closed session and amended July 22nd, 2025 special meeting minutes. Any questions on any of that? Item B, the treasures report, Mr. Cowley.
Alright, on the general account on August 31st, 2025, there was a balance of $6,678,092.46 in cash and investments. Receipts since the 1st of September and not included in the August 31 balance are $44,443.15 and the dispersments from tonight's September 8th board meeting total $124,976.15. In the flexible spending account on August 31st, 2025, there was a balance of $30,982.61 in cash and investments. In the health reimbursement account on August 31st, 2025, there was a balance of $7,776.55 in cash and investments. And the debt service fund on August 31st, 2025, there was a balance of $674.92 in cash and investments. A detailed report on fund activity is included in the financial statements.
Thank you, sir. Item C, payment of invoices. I would hope anybody that had questions reached out to our rural person regarding that. Item D, resignations slash employments, Mr. Fettalcott.
We have two resignations, Savannah Tishernodeen, Iron River, and then Heather Lundeen, food service, as the two resignations on this agenda. Careful, move on to employment, please do. A couple of new team members across the district, Rachel Kittle, NES para educator, Blanca Severson, IRES, second grade, Lisa Hasselbrave, IRES para educator, Courtney Mashlin, IRES para educator, Randy Mush, NMS para educator, and Amy Christensen, food service. Are our new employments, then we have two internal transfers. Allison Holzclaw moving over from Tigersden to IRES fourth grade, and then Kendra Ruman moving from IRES second, IRES second grade to NES second grade. Any questions on that?
It's a very active August and September here, so let's hold that calm.
Yes.
With that being done, any questions on any of those items? If not, I am going to need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Item five. Approval items. Item A, inter-district transfers, Mr. Fettalcott.
So we have two inter-district transfers. The information is in the board packet. Do we have our 4K parents here? And then do we have our third grade parent here? There you go. So we have both parents here. And they've provided their justification information via the board packet. Is there anything, myself or any of them can answer for you? I believe it's actually started because school has started, but this is how we've worked in the past, since the board meeting does not line up with the start of our school year.
Did everybody get the correspondence from them?
So the recommendation is to approve both.
So they've started and they're liking it? They like the training?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. It's a good fit, so yeah. I'll make a motion to approve both inter-district transfers.
We have a motion and a second. All those, any other discussion, are we good? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
You're both welcome to stay if you wish, but if you want to leave, no...
Thank you very much.
No judgment here.
Oh, he squealed his tires. Item B, policies. The final raid, a final read on three different policies. 1130, ethics and conflicts of interest. 3230, ethics and conflicts of interest, and 4230, ethics and conflicts of interest.
Yeah, so these were tabled policies from our July meeting. We're bringing back now. We wanted to provide a little bit more information about what the definition of a relative is. So this is, as it says there, ethics and conflict of interest around supervision of relatives. So Wendy Stadi, our HR manager, worked to try to provide a, I'd say a pretty accurate and useful definition for us for this policy. I don't know if you want me to read it out loud, it is there for you, but it's comprehensive, in my opinion, and something that would definitely cover the district as part of these policies. If we do approve it tonight, then Ms. Keller will work with our friends from Board Docs and Neola to make sure that that gets plugged into the policy and that goes out to our websites.
The only question I have is, where does our definition live?
So this one will live in the policy itself, we'd add it to it.
It's literally in it.
Okay. So that's essentially why we tabled these, because we didn't know for sure. That would be the, what's in the board, our board enhancements is what would be essentially copied and pasted into the policy.
Do we have a discussion on making a motion to approve these three policies as just stated?
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. We are just cooking through today. Item C, the athletic cooperative programs with Superior.
So this is a, and Mr. Smith is with us, so I'm gonna lean heavily on him to cover this topic. I believe this is an annual process for us.
Gymnastics is annual. The debate requires annual renewal of gymnastics co-op, and the other two, the boys swimming and the girls hockey is every other year, and ours are due.
So this is, is this a renewal of obviously gymnastics for the year, but girls and boys, girls hockey, boys swimming, this is for a two-year renewal? Is there a, I'm just asking. If we, I'm pretty sure we're going to say yes to this, but if we say yes, and does this then have to be approved by the Superior School District as well?
Yes.
And... Can, so can they come back? Say they say yes this year, can they come back next year and say, we want to be done with this, and can they cancel that halfway through? Or are you good for two years?
We're good for two years. The debate, we're from...
Upon that?
Yeah. Gymnastics is, it's annual.
Yeah.
Just ballpark, what do you anticipate the participation will be?
To my knowledge, we have three, at least three, if not four, girls who do gymnastics. We have three, it might be fourth girls hockey player, we don't know any swimmers at this time, boys swimmers at this time.
Is there a cost on this or no?
Yes, there is. We get billed from Superior. They take the total number of players or both athletes from both schools, they take the total cost of the program.
Pro rate it.
And they divide per, you get per-player cost.
Correct. Can we as a district do cover that at this moment in time? Sure. How do they calculate the cost of the program? I mean, does football include the turf we put down or...
With hockey and gymnastics is relatively high, because you rent the space to practice.
Oh, sure.
You buy ice to play hockey, your gymnastics at a off-site facility.
Okay. Breaking news, hockey can get expensive. For all involved.
This is my poll, desperate question, if I would have led to provide information, I would have my answers right there in front of me.
I had to scroll down a little bit further, like, oh, there it is, right there. My question is probably in here also. Oh.
I say it every year, but wish there is boys hockey co-op.
That was my question. If there are athletes, is there a requirement to have a place for them to play said sport? Or like, can a school refuse to co-op?
There's no requirement for school to pay this, it is a mutual agreement.
Okay.
Between two schools.
And the key word there is mutual, so. I think we'd welcome some other opportunities, but at this point in time, these are the three that we have.
Is there no girls swimming?
Not at this time, no.
Oh, alright.
Alright, well, with all of that discussion, looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the co-op, co-op agreements with Superior for gymnastics, girls hockey, and boys swimming.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Item D, authorization of the issuance of establishing parameters for temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $2.795 million pursuant to Section 67.128A1 Wisconsin statutes. Mr. Fettalcott.
Nailed this statute there, thank you.
Yeah.
This is a pretty annual process for us. The, this is what's called short-term borrowing. And why we have to do this is, the reality is, is that cash flow for the district can get very lean. How we're structured to get funding from the state, it comes in big chunks. And the reality is our bills and payroll come on a monthly basis. So that inconsistency with revenue versus the consistency with bills a lot requires us to do what we call short-term borrowing, to kind of cover those peaks and valleys, for lack of a better term. We have worked with Ellers Financial. This one is officially for the board's approval, for me to work with them to go out to bid, to make sure that we get the best or lowest interest rates on this borrowing. Of course, the lowest, lower the interest rate, the less money it costs in interest. I do anticipate that this number will be less than what's listed here, but we won't have the complete information until we do some third Friday count, if, process where we're getting an idea as to how many students are actually walking through our doors. So that will happen, I believe September 19th is the official count date for all students in the state of Wisconsin, all districts. And then from there, the October meeting will have this information, and then the board will make a decision with one caveat. October 13th is a federal holiday. So what we'll end up doing is bringing the information to you. You will give me the, hopefully the ability to say, we would like to select the lowest bid. At that point in time, I will have information on bidders A, B, C, and D. Hopefully we get a couple. There's been some years where we've had just one. There's been some years where we've had multiple, but the reality is that if we didn't do this, we'd have a rough time paying bills some months, which is not a good thing. Wendy Stadi, I always give her kudos, and she loves when I do this. We do put this money to work. We do put it in the, what we call the LGIP account, which tries to maximize our return on investment to offset the revenue or the interest cost. So the recommendation is to approve, so that way we can consistently pay our bills month to month, which I'm told is a good thing from the business manager.
This is less than last year, is it not?
It is. I anticipate continuing to borrow less and less as we, which is a good thing, that the ultimate goal is to be in the situation where we don't have to borrow any money to cover our shortfalls. We, thankfully, this is, we have my third year doing this. Each year's been a little bit less and a little bit less. So my goal is to get us to a point where we're at zero.
Any additional questions?
Well, I was just going to say, I make a recommendation to approve the short-term borrowing exploration.
I have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call. Mr. Probst.
Yes.
Ms. Brunet.
Yes.
Mr. Cowley.
Yes.
Mr. Glonnik.
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch.
Yep.
Ms. Johnson. I vote yes. Unanimous. Don't spend it all in one place. Item six, presentation by Baird with a potential tax impact. I'll let you start this one.
I can start this one. So we have spent the past few months going through a week, you know, I've talked about as a district-wide facilities, I'll create a long-range facility plan. So our goal was to, you know, get an idea of what we need to be cognizant of in our buildings, within our buildings and on our grounds, to help our board create a long-range facilities plan, to ensure our buildings continue to serve our students for years to come. So through that project, essentially, we've identified over 350 potential items that will need to be addressed in the next 10 to 12 years. The reality is, is that the whole project, if we looked at it in one big chunk, which is not what I recommend doing, is north of $40 million in costs. So we've worked with the engineers and architects from Myron and ISG, our custodial staff, our administrative team, to identify the most critical projects that we feel like are of immediate need, and then also that ones that'll need to be addressed in the short term. So that list going by building, some of these projects have been talked about heavily, but I just want to put them out into the world. NES, replacement of the roof structure, it is the original roof on that building from 1997. We continue to do everything we can to limp that along, but it is due for replacement. We need some updated wiring to help support the technology in our classrooms over there. Schools never tend to have enough outlets, so we need to update that. The flooring throughout the hallway is original to that building. It shows age, if you've been in it, tiles cracking, looking to replace that. And then the building control system. Basically, all the controls that run our HVAC system over there are well beyond their useful life and are slated to be replaced. Those are the very, very much immediate costs. Some emerging costs within the next three to six years. The east driveway and west driveway are showing age. There's spots on the south side sidewalk panels that need replacements, lots of cracking going on there. The classroom casework, carpet tile, paint is outdated, that'd be something that we'd be looking to refresh. All three playgrounds, north playground, what we call the 3-5 playground, the south playground, what we call the K-2 playground, and the early childhood playground. All due for some significant investments in restoration, all that stuff is getting aged. We have water booster pumps that help us circulate water between the middle school and elementary school, that's where our water comes from, it serves both buildings. That's getting dated. The boilers, there's three in total in that building, those are getting closer to the end of their life. The AC unit, which serves the middle part of the building, essentially, it's a rooftop unit, that's getting up there in age as well, original to the building. And then security upgrades with the KEFOP system is something that would be, something that we see as a need there. Any questions on Northwestern Elementary? If not, I will move on to Iron River Elementary. Iron River, most immediate needs, the shingled portion of the gym roof, it's the only shingled portion of that building, is due to be replaced. Number of shingles come off each year through the winter months and need to be addressed. There's also a series of windows original to that building that are well beyond their age, useful life, they're hard to open, hardware's breaking, in some cases, the casements are rotting out. Would be immediate needs there. Beyond that, in the emerging category, building control system similar to NES is dated, needs to be replaced. The fire alarm panel in that building is very old and looking to address or needs to be addressed. The HVAC system is more of an individual unit basis, it's not how they typically do things anymore. When we look at how schools are built now, there's all three of our schools, in terms of the middle school, NES, and high school have a central building-wide HVAC system with a series of air handlers. Iron River is individual classrooms, dated, needs to be looked at. We have a series of bathrooms that are not ADA compliant, so if we were to address that, that would be a need. And then another part of the building control system, what we call variable frequency drives, VFDs, they help modulate air coming into the building based off the temperatures, it helps us a lot with energy efficiency, very, very dated as well. That playground over there could use some TLC, and then a KEFOP system for this building as well, you'll see that as a common need throughout our district for security purposes. The middle school. Immediate costs, fire alarm panel there is very dated and beyond its useful service life. This has been pretty well advertised, and if you're driven in the south side sidewalk and the south side driveway, need immediate attention. It's not just simply replacing the blacktop and the concrete, it's trying to figure out how to mitigate water, because we are in clay country. And when water sits underneath those two items in the wintertime, it causes a lot of problems, as most people know. Another commonality, the building control system for there is dated as well. Some of the more emerging costs in the next three to six years for that building, the west side parking lot and driveway are slated for some improvement. Really entire site-wide, there's drainage issues, there's low areas. It's tough to get water to get away from that building because it's clay and it's not necessarily an elevated area. There's not any ramp access to the playground. We have two domestic water booster pumps in that building that move water back and forth that are very, very much aging. The tile in that building is original, in most cases, to the building itself, back from the 70s, it served its life. A lot of the classroom casework is original to 1970s, when it was originally built. The staff lounge does not have necessary needs, there's not even a sink in that building for teachers to wash dishes, it's something that we'd like to potentially address. There are some newer portions of the parking lot driveway area there that were replaced approximately 10-ish years ago. Some seal coating, cracked sealing is needed, TLC to extend the life of that, and then another KEFOP system. High school. Some immediate costs, the air dryer system for our wooden metal shops is reaching its life expectancy. Mr. Charlier and the team and our head custodians do a great job of piecing it together, but we use that every day. If you've ever been up here and watched our students in the wood shop and metal shop, it is a busy area. The flooring for the metal shop is very dated, if you walk through there too, that could use some TLC, no doubt. The joint sealants for all the precast walls, so this is basically a precast concrete panel building, the new sections of it, for lack of a better term, those joints are filled with caulk, and eventually that weathers and needs to be pulled out and replaced, so we're getting to the end of the life on that. The water heater to this building is original to 2008. It continues to give us some grief, we continue to put parts in it and fix it, but ultimately it's reaching the end of its life. There are two air conditioning units directly related to our server rooms that cool all the technology that runs the internet, which we all know is vital to the jobs that we do, whether we like it or not. Those two are well past their service life. The camera system here is dated, something that could really use an update, most of this technology is 10 to 12 plus years old, which for technology is very, very old, and I always joke, anything that has a battery, if I can get five years out of it, I feel pretty good. And then the track is in line for a resurface and a repaint. The good news is, we don't believe that we'll have to strip it and go all the way down to what would be the asphalt subgrade, but they can resurface it and buy another close to 20 years of life out of the track. Immediate needs for the high school. Emerging needs, some of our driveways are slated for some TLC. South driveway, entrance driveway, west parking lot repairs. The building AC unit that serves a number of areas is original to the building, getting old, and then another commonality that we see is some of those variable frequency drives throughout the building are starting to fail. Again, that's another one that helps modulate temperature based on outside air, it does show up in energy efficiency savings for us. And then the last one there is a KEFOP system for this building as well, is a commonality. So in total, you know, we're looking at North with close to $18 million of potential projects here, so Kevin from, Kevin Mullin from Baird Financial is going to join us and talk through some potential tax impact scenarios. So Kevin, this is his area of expertise, he's worked with school districts throughout the state, probably more than you care to number, I bet. But Kevin's going to kind of sit down with us and look through some potential information I think the board will be wanting to hear, so. Kevin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Cody.
You can introduce yourself too.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I feel like Cody kind of gave the punchline away, I'm kind of old. But I have worked with a lot of school districts, especially up here recently, so recently I've worked with Drummond, South Shore, Washburn, Bayfield, to name a few, Northwood, because there's a fair amount of need that's being addressed presently in this area. I also have worked with counties and municipal governments throughout the state doing similar types of work, including Douglas County, and that's just to give you a sense of some of the work that's going on generally in this area. So my goal tonight really is a couple fold. One is, I just want to give you like a very basic understanding, and I'm sure you have a good understanding of the school formula and how the levy works, but also then talk about the debt service piece and how to communicate debt and a tax impact for debt moving forward, because I think all those things fit together, and you're in a really unique situation, and I want to point that out. Unique is good, but also unique can create some, you know, challenges with regard to communication, and I want to kind of frame what those things are for you, so that you have a sense as to how that can impact your conversation moving forward. And I also want to keep it to about 15 or 20 minutes, so you have a chance for questions and don't get totally bored. So first, and this does have to be, which is great. Last year, when you approved your budget, you approved a total tax levy for $10,396,000. You're going to be going to a similar, you're in October, moving a tax levy, and that tax levy consisted of three pieces. Your revenue limit, which is basically... Oh, shit.
Just put it by you, so the, you know, teens of people online.
Yes. Thanks. That consists, consists of three components. The revenue limit piece, which the state, you know, basically dictates through the legislative process what the revenue limit is, is based on spending per student, and that's capped, and for you, that's $6,850,000. You have a modest amount in community service of $40,000. And then separate from all of that, you have your annual payment for referendum approved debt. That payment in last year's budget was $3.5 million roughly. So your budget consisted of those three things for a total of $10,396. And so when we talk about the impact to debt, we're really looking at the change on that piece. So if you were to take that $10,396 and convert it into a mil rate, that mil rate breaks down to $6.77 per $1,000 of fair market or equalized value. Now, obviously, you, like many communities, especially in the Northwest here, have seen really large increases in fair market value. So tax rate sometimes isn't the best gauge of what the impact to a taxpayer is, because of all that increase is inflationary, your home... Your home was worth a hundred thousand dollars last year, now it's worth a hundred and fifteen. If the tax rate goes down, but that your, the value of your house goes up, the impact is kind of the same. And so that's why we like to really focus on that tax levy as opposed to mil rate. But mil rate does help from a comparative standpoint for a couple of reasons, so. So that mil rate, uh, six dollars and seventy seven cents, again, is your total budget that goes to the taxpayers divided by your equalized value of a billion and five thirty-six. So if you look at your tax rate uh since two thousand sixteen, that's gone down. It's gone down for two major reasons. One, um, your revenue limit per student hasn't grown a lot as you lose students or students, your enrollment stays relatively stable, that has gone down, aid is generally increased. But the last piece, as I mentioned earlier, is that fair market value has increased. So all of those three things have led to kind of this general decline in the tax rate per thousand. So, you know, you've gone from thirteen dollars and forty-five cents in two thousand sixteen, down to six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Also wanted to uh give you a sense as to what your borrowing authority is. So you, as a school district, can borrow up to ten percent of your equalized value. And as I mentioned earlier, that amount is one billion, five thirty-six, which means that you have the technical ability through state statute to borrow a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-four million dollars worth of ge- general obligation debt. Presently have seven million outstanding, which gives you a remaining debt capacity of a hundred and forty-six million dollars. I assume you all want to be reelected, maybe not, but you know, like, um, moving forward with all one forty-six would just not be reasonable. But I think it does help put into context, you know, what, uh, you know, is is this borrowing amount reasonable relative to what you have outstanding? And so, you know, that's a function of growth and value, but also the fact that you've been conservative and aggressive with repayment of your existing debt. So both of those things, you know, have contributed to that, and that's a very good position to be in. So I think one of the best ways to use a tax rate is to compare yourself to other communities, because, you know, that is relatively stable, you know, there's been growth in value everywhere, and, you know, everyone is kind of facing similar challenges. So if you look at last year and compare yourself, I use both geographic and conference peers just to get a get a sense as to who might be on that list. But you are, you know, smack dab in the middle, maybe to a little bit of the right of what that total tax levy rate is compared to those peers. You're also very unique in that you have some pretty unique peers around you. Northwood Schools is the, and Northwood and Drummond are two of the lowest tax rates in the state. And South Shore and Bayfield tend to be on the higher end, um, just because of the way that the school funding formula works, and you're smack dab in the middle.
The Drummond number probably doesn't include the referendum.
It does include the referendums, it does, both referendums, correct, yep.
You got a lot of property value.
That's exactly right, yeah.
That's why it's what it is.
Small number of students and lots of property value. The other thing that I wanted to uh give you a sense of is the borrowing rate. And so what this chart is, um, it's probably the least interesting chart in a relatively uninteresting presentation, but this is a look back over the last thirty years of what a twenty-year borrowing interest rate cost is for the highest rated um credit quality of a municipal bond. So think of it as like the the gold standard of a borrower, best credit rating for a twenty-year borrowing. So if you were to look back thirty years, you know, that interest rate was uh above six percent back in nineteen ninety-five, and it dropped precipitously heading into two thousand twenty, and when we were in COVID, um, you know, that rate was down around one percent, just over one percent. And it, you know, as we came out of COVID and the Fed started, um, you know, increasing the Fed funds rate, we saw that interest rate go back up. We've kind of settled back into what is historically a relatively average interest cost for borrowing. The reason that I want to show you this is twofold, one, looking back, we're at a pretty average interest rate environment over that thirty-year period of time, not too high, not too low, it's kind of like right in the middle. But also, when we talk about a borrowing, um, we've made some estimates with regard to interest cost, and we've been conservative relative to what this uh thirty-year historical look back looks like. So we're using conservative interest rates based on the historical reality, if that makes sense. So the biggest question that you probably have is if we were to borrow eighteen point nine million dollars, what would that do to, what would that impact look like to our taxpayers? And as I mentioned earlier, you're in a really unique situation. I mentioned that that far right-hand block of the three pieces of your uh budget included three and a half million dollars of a debt service payment. It also includes a little bit of a special borrowing uh energy efficiency loan that acts and smells like referendum approved debt, so when it's paid off, it will come off your revenue limit. So we've included that payment in here, but if you look at your existing debt payments, like I said, last year, you had about three point seven million dollars scheduled for debt, and that includes your referendum approved debt service plus this energy efficiency loan. In the budget that you're preparing right now, that you're probably going to approve in October, you're gonna have three point nine million roughly for that type of debt in that budget. But after that, the large payment for the last referendum project goes away. And so your debt service cost drops dramatically. So we've assumed that the timing of a new borrowing would begin as that debt service on your old borrowing ends. And so the first block payment would be in two thousand, the budget that you create in two thousand twenty-six for a payment in twenty-seven, and it would fill in the gap where your old borrowing was. What's unique about this is if you took an eighteen million, eighteen point nine million dollar borrowing and you paid that off and kept your payments relatively constant year over year, the first question I had was, how quickly could you pay that back without increasing your debt levy? So that answer is roughly two thousand thirty-two. And I used an interest rate of four point seven five percent. So that would be a really quick payback for a loan that size, but it also would mean that there is no increase in terms of the budget impact year over year. And it seems, you know, if I were to just walk in and say, well, you could do eighteen point nine million for no impact, you would have shown me the door. So I'm saying it now, but i- it's possible. And the reason is, is that your payments drop after two thousand twenty-six. So that's one answer. Oftentimes, when you go to survey, like you're considering doing right now, and you may have optionality in your survey questions, you know, do we want to, um, you know, add a pool? Because I know you're not adding a pool, I'll use that as an example. Do we want to add a pool, and that pool is a two and a half million dollar question? Here, how would you say, you know, if eighteen point nine million included the pool, and then we were looking at a number that didn't include the pool, what's less than zero? But I wanted to put a value to that two and a half million dollar project. So if you were to borrow eighteen point nine million over this period of time, that's no, no impact. If you were to borrow two and a half million dollars less than that, if you look on the bottom right-hand side, that impact would go down by thirty cents. So you could say, using this repayment, that impact is roughly thirty-one cents for two and a half million dollars. Now, we've made a bunch of assumptions, I'm gonna stop there because you probably have questions about that. Let's let you take a breath.
Thirty-one cents per?
Per thousand.
Per thousand or per hundred thousand?
Per, well, per thousand, so um it would be thirty-one dollars per hundred thousand.
That's an important stat, just so we all are aware.
Yeah.
You know, you're doing the math of, okay, what are my, what are my taxes?
Correct. No, go ahead.
Why six years to pay off? I know that meshes with the coming up, but why, you know, these are
Sure.
Five thirty-year investments.
Correct. I love, so glad you asked that question. So if we were to borrow, and the board has discretion to borrow longer, right? So you could borrow longer, so two things happen when you borrow longer. First, your interest rate and your interest cost go up because you're spreading that payment out over a longer period of time, but also other taxpayers who are going to be using the project. The other thing that happens is your impact goes down. So you're going, you're stretching it out ten years, your tax impact would actually go down by seventy-six cents per thousand. Similarly, if you were to do it over twenty years, which is the longest period of time that the state allows you to do that, interest rate goes up, interest cost goes up, tax impact goes down, so that would be a reduction of a dollar thirty-three. So the reason we didn't start there is because I, you know, I have been involved in a lot of these conversations that you're gonna talk with School Perceptions later. It's really, really difficult to build credibility when you tell someone that they're gonna borrow eighteen point nine million dollars and their tax bill is going to go down. I think it's fair to say their tax bill's not going to go up, no matter how you cut the onion. You, as a board, if a referendum is successful, would have the decision in terms of how you borrow afterwards, in terms of what that looks like. And certainly you could go in, you know, with your head held high and say, no impact for this project. It could be less, and you, as a board, could decide once the referendum is approved, if it's approved, whether you borrow, you know, and keep that mil, that tax impact exactly where it was, stretch it ten, stretch it twenty. Similarly, if you borrowed, you know, two and a half million dollars less, you could pay it off even earlier than what was originally shown, you know. So you have a lot of flexibility, but um Rob, uh Denise from School Perceptions and Becca, the three of us have talked, and in terms of how to present it, it's quite a dilemma, right? You know, you don't want to just, if you start here, then you, as a board, you're kind of locked in. And I think from a standpoint of messaging in the survey, no impact, potentially thirty-one cents for a two and a half million dollar project, and certainly that's the conversation you should have, yes, sir.
So on the shorter um loan, aren't you better off because costs are, I mean, you could pay for things within the next six years because the money's coming in quicker, whereas if the money's not coming in that quick, it aren't really?
Well, so in all, all four examples, you would have all the money on July first, and you could spend it right away. And you would invest it, it's just the payment each year, you know, one, you're paying it off much more quickly as opposed to this one, you're paying it off over a longer period of time. But in all four scenarios.
Does that, um, Cody, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but, but, and I see the lovely Myron lady back there, but this was a, I thought, then when we originally talked about this, this was like a three-year project to get all of the stuff that we had talked about over the next two or three years, is that, I mean, am I?
So like, if you went around and put a table, then it would be eight or nine months design? Not just that start and stop until spring?
And and everything hypothetically here, we go to referendum, everything here gets approved, we got nineteen million bucks, right? And and that nineteen million dollars is gonna get spent over projects, it's not gonna happen the first year, it's gonna take time to get done. So if I'm correct in that, but year one, we've got four million dollars of the projects. The other, go ahead, fifteen million dollars goes into a, an account where Wendy's gonna work her magic and we're gonna end up earning back all of our money. And, come on, Wendy. But, but that, the the money that is, I guess, so now back to you. So the money that's being borrowed at an interest rate of four and a half or five percent, depending on the term, you're taking into consideration, one hundred percent of those funds are not returning us anything. So if we've got fifteen million dollars, as an example, sitting in an account earning us three percent annually, we have a less cost impact to do.
That's right.
Where, and maybe this is now a question for you. So that three percent that, I'm just gonna use three percent on fifteen million dollars is, I don't know what's the math there, I'm not gonna do it, but. But whatever that dollar amount is, does that have to get used for debt reduction, or can that get used for something else?
That's a great question.
You wanna take it?
Yeah, thanks. And you're thinking about it the right way, so a couple of things. To your last question, it can only be used for one of two things. It can be used for the project for which the borrowing was approved, so it's considered part of the project cost. So only for whatever the wording in the project is, so it can't be used for operations, which is usually the most common question.
Yep.
So it can be used for that, or repayment of debt service, to repay this borrowing for which it was borrowed. So those are the two uh ways that it can be used. I would say generally what happens is you get closer to, you know, an answer in terms of what your project looks like, you can do a rough estimate as to when you're gonna borrow and what that interest income's going to be. And let's just say, to use a number, I'm not saying it's the number, but let's say it's five hundred thousand dollars of interest income based on the draft schedule that Becca provides, um, you could borrow eighteen point four. You could borrow less, five hundred thousand dollars less, knowing that you're gonna use some interest income for that project. Flip side is, you know, you can borrow the eighteen point nine, and if there are change orders uh that come along, you can use that as contingency for your project. So there are really two ways to look at it.
But in the event that we take that and use it as debt service, the example that you have there, the three million dollars of interest is probably not a true number because if we're gonna use it for that, I would expect that number is gonna be reduced.
Correct, you could reduce it, yep.
So we have essentially more capital to use toward our capital projects.
It'd be a decision that the board would make on how do we want to invest? Because as I talked about, we have a projection, but, you know, you get into the roofing project and all of a sudden you find out that we have this curve ball that nobody knew existed, right? Talking with the Myron folks, they tried to build that in, but nobody has torn apart our roof to look at it before we replace it. There's always curve balls that happens at. The other beauty is that we could say, okay, we have a longer list of items that we've talked about here, plus potentially another three hundred plus more down the road that might need to get addressed. Do we want to reinvest it into another project, or do we want to put that into debt service repayment? Really, the board will make that decision. And that's part of what my job would be, is to bring that to you and say, here's option A, option B, where do we want to go with this? Getting the nail on the head, there's two things we can do with it.
Yeah. Great questions.
It's the two hundred and fifty grand in debt.
That would be hungry, it's the energy.
Energy efficiency loan, yeah, and so the energy efficiency loan is a little bit, it's a unique borrowing program, so the state considers that you didn't have to go to referendum for that small project. And at the time, the state allowed a school district to borrow for that purpose and have a special exemption on your revenue limit. So the special exemption is the two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars or whatever the interest, principal and interest payment is each year. But when that loan is paid off, your exemption on your revenue limit goes away. So it really, in all ways, it looks, smells and tastes exactly like a referendum bond, and so that's why we included it here, because it's not like when it goes away, you get more revenue limit authority. It just, when it goes away, it goes away.
What it is actually is the, there was a four point five million dollar borrowing from two thousand eleven, ten, somewhere in that range before I got here. It's the energy efficiency exemption for the HVAC system that A.
There you go, yeah.
So NES was very similar setup to what Iron River is currently. It was, at that point in time, I don't believe it'll ever come back, the board's gonna decide to borrow without voter approval. And that's been the repayment schedule that was agreed upon by that board at that point in time.
So the other, uh, there's one other assumption here that I think is important that we point out. We assumed when we came up with the tax rate that um growth and value would be one percent a year. Now, clearly, your growth and value, equalized value's been much higher than that, but most of that, as I said earlier, was uh, the vast majority of it was inflationary. So this would be, you know, a close assumption for what net new construction is, meaning, you know, new stuff in the community. This year, I think you had point six percent growth in new construction in the community. So that's why that number is significantly below what you've been experiencing. But really, what I think's important is the levy, the actual dollar payments. So let me just, so a couple uh brief slides just in terms of, you know, uh, what's happening throughout the state, so. There are three types of referendum, issuing debt, non-recurring and recurring. You can see that, you know, there were a total of two hundred and sixty-four uh questions since two thousand twenty-one for issuing debt, uh, non-recurring operational referendum, three hundred, and recurring operational, ninety-one. hundred, and recurring operational ninety-one for almost, you know, six hundred and fifty different questions throughout the state. The, the most successful referenda, on average throughout the state during that period of time, have been to issue debt. There have been roughly seventy percent of those questions approved, and they're in blue. The blues are the approved.
I should know this, but how many districts are in the state?
Four hundred and seventy-two? I should know that too. Four seventy-two, I think. In terms of Maple's referendum history, going back to two thousand eighteen, you can see mixed bag. Issued debt in two thousand six was the most recent approved borrowing or approved referendum. And you had a non-recurring, it's the only other, you know, one that wasn't for issuing debt in two thousand eighteen that did not pass. In terms of what some of the, you know, the people on that tax rate list have done in your area, you can see, you know, who's gone to referendum recently and what the success rate has been for them. And this has been since two thousand twenty, I think Spooner is the oldest one on there in terms of when they went to referendum. So NR is a non-recurring operational question and ID is issued debt. And then just debt questions, I wanted to give you a sense of, since two thousand fifteen, where debt questions have been asked and when they've been successful. And you can see, you know, there have been four hundred and twenty-one questions since two hundred, two thousand fifteen that have been asked. Seventy-one percent of those have passed, and you can see on this map where they've occurred. Quick update on what that timeline looks like. So in even numbered years, you have the opportunity to go to referendum technically four times. You can only go twice by state law. So generally speaking, you have a spring-ish opportunity, either in February or April. Most school districts use the April referendum because that's a more highly frequented, attended, thank you, referendum. And then similarly in the fall, you have the November and August opportunity. November, hands down, has been the most successful, well, hands down, close has been the most successful referendum date, just because, you know, we feel like there are lots of people that show up for a November referendum. However, spring referendums, because, you know, you only have two opportunities in a calendar year to ask, many school districts in even years like to take advantage of the spring opportunity. If their public is not supportive of the referendum, they then can fine tune the question and come, come back in the fall. For you, just given that you're, you know, you, you have this situation where your debt service is stopping on your existing loan and you'd like to take advantage of that timing, that might be an op, something to consider when you're thinking about whether to go in the spring or in the fall. Going in the spring gives you the chance to come back in the fall and still hit that same budget cycle. Does that make sense? Odd numbered years, you only have the spring opportunity to go to referendum. There is no fall, primary or general.
Is there still like a punishment if you don't pass a referendum or does that go away?
So there's, if you are a low revenue limit school district, which you're not, and you're going for an operational referendum, if it doesn't pass, then I believe that that's still in place, that you don't have the opportunity to go back for a certain period of time. Can't remember if that was changed by the legislature in this last annual budget or not.
To my knowledge, it has not, no. We're, we're above three dollars over the lower revenue limit ceiling. The question matters if it's operational versus that issue.
That's correct. Thanks.
The state budget has been set for this year and next year already, so that wouldn't necessarily penalize us because it's only if new money comes into the, the formula. And I cannot tell you what's going to happen to you or she or him.
So some additional thoughts, quickly, no one size fits all. Obviously you have some really unique things that are present in your conversation. And so, yeah, ask lots of questions, involve the community, done a nice facility study. Make sure your board is on board and you guys are, you know, having the conversations right now. Communication is key and the other is, you know, every community has something that is a challenge in the community. It's the thing that you kind of talk about, walk around. Make sure you're addressing what we refer to as the elephant in the room in terms of, you know, the hard questions for the district. Because, you know, those are the questions that come up first and you can pretend that, you know, they don't exist, but for sure, your first step outside in the referendum world, that's the question that'll come up. And so we just always encourage you to, you know, have the hard conversations often and rarely. So, yeah, thanks for your time. Any additional questions?
Yeah, thank you. Go, go twice. So I, I do think it's important just for me to tag in there, you know, why are we here or why are we sitting where we're sitting? The reality is historically educational funding has not kept up with inflation. This has resulted in about ninety percent of school districts across the state trying to ask this type of question of their local communities. That's all there is to it. Whether it's to pay for capital projects or to increase operating revenue for operational expenses. Our reality is, I think, almost every surrounding district that borders us has asked a question like this of their community. Some have asked twice. I know from my chair, we've been able to create a balanced budget over the last couple of years, but it's been by taking our belt in some areas. It's been staff cuts, it's, and, and some of that is through attrition and not replacing positions, reshuffling job titles, job responsibilities, revising healthcare plans. That's the most recent one, that was a very, very large savings to the district. We've reduced transportation costs, we've revised contracts, we've tried to reduce operational spending to the maximum extent possible. And the reality is, is that we've balanced the budget off of delaying capital projects like we've talked about. These are our big dollar amounts. And I feel confident in saying that the budget that we have is, is very doable, but not what we put in potentially millions of dollars of needs for our buildings that our community technically owns. And the goal of this is not to have to get to this point, but the reality is, is that we don't have the funding to pay for this stuff. At least initially, we need to have a conversation with our community to see what they will or won't support is what it boils down to. So that's why Kevin presented today to talk through some of the options that we maybe want to consider as a board. But we have tried to not get to this point, but the reality is, is that the number of projects combined with the potential cost of each project, it's tough to figure out how to pay for it or just general operational levy. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate the time.
I guess one question, can, can you share that slide deck with us?
Oh, sure. We'll get it through.
Thank you.
Yes, please share that.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's a lot of information to try to retain.
All right, well, let's keep rolling. Item seven, the early literacy remediation plan, first read.
So I got to resort to Mr. Lehrer, he's part of our Act Twenty statute. It is a first read, so this is no action to be taken today.
Tough act to follow, you know, he talks about the money and now you get to talk about state statutes, so early drive tonight. So buried deep in the expectations of Wisconsin Act Twenty when they passed it, was some language about communication with families and communication with boards that was a requirement, but it was a requirement without really an end date. So this is something that Association of Wisconsin Administrators at the elementary level and the Wisconsin School Board Association kind of collaborated on and came up with some ideas on how to develop a plan that could be a communication template to family members, to boards, to just say, hey, here's how we approach teaching reading, here's how we assess for learning, and then here's what we do if kids are going to continue teaching. So I've been here before and kind of talked about what Act Twenty was. This is a requirement that says we have to put our practice into paper. So I worked throughout the course of the summer with some other districts, kind of batting some ideas around, put some ideas into the frameworks that were given to us. And then this fall, already at the end of the summer, ran this through the Northwestern Elementary School Building Leadership Team, Mrs. Fleming, who is our reading teacher at NES, Mrs. Greg, who's our district reading specialist, and Mrs. Paulus over at Iger River, to kind of look at it from the lens of, are we putting the what were practices into a document that communicates to families, here's how we do business? And I've gotten a thumbs up from all of them, a lot of good feedback from them about how it works. And we're bringing it forward to you tonight, just as a first reading to say, you know, from your lens, do you have any questions about it? Otherwise, when this comes back, it becomes a kind of a living, breathing document of how do we approach reading in the school district.
So again, this is just the first read for everybody, but we'll bring this back for approval in the October meeting. No action needs to be taken out at this point in time, but it is the procedural stuff that we got to take.
Correct. Just to meet the requirements and hopefully if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, give me a call or shoot me an email and I can work through it. Or feel free to ask any of the teachers at elementary schools because they live it. The paper jockey on this one, they really put the work in my classroom. So if you have questions, feel free to ask.
I only have one question. The, this assessment platform aims what plus?
Yep.
Is there fees associated with it?
No, so, good question. So historically in Maple, we use some different platforms to look at how kids are growing. Kind of paper pencil tests that emerged into online tests. The state of Wisconsin actually selected A plus as the, this is what you have to use. I wasn't in favor of it, but that's what we were given. So that is in pre-kindergarten twice a year, and then in kindergarten through third grade, we have to use that assessment in reading only three times a year. And that is kind of like the Wisconsin Board Exam or the ACT, they tell us that's what we have to use. So it just kind of trickled down the...
Yeah, we charge.
It's clunky. My own opinion is we have better tools, but it, it gives us measures to say if kids are growing, which is the point. And I can see where the state's coming from, saying, y'all got to use the same thing so that they can't say, well, you know, Maple says this, but, you know, Virchow says this, you know, they're just a same tool for everybody. But no fee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Administrative reports. And a projected state revenues for the twenty-five, six school year.
So I wanted to make sure that this is just part of the conversation with the board. We will work to, and I'll get to this in just a minute about the annual meeting, but the predicted state revenues, what we call the equalization aid for the school district is, is projected to have a fifteen percent cut. I will not have that finalized number until October fifteenth, but state revenue, you know, how we fund education is for us is a combination of two things, local property tax and state revenue. And it's a, it's an inverse formula. The more state aid you get, the lower your property tax level is, or levy is, excuse me. The less state aid you get, either we got to figure out a cut or we have to levy that. So Kevin talked about our property values continue to rise, and that is part of the formula. In the very simplest terms, the more property rich you are in the eyes of the formula, the less state aid you get. And I've done some work. The reality is our property values, equalized value according to the Department of Revenue, have, have gone up seventy-one percent in the last five years. And I'm anticipating another potential eight percent jump in that number in the coming, would be January twenty twenty-six. So this information is important to get out there, that a, a cut in state aid is hard to handle. It is a formula that we don't have a lot of control over. Obviously I have no control over what the Department of Revenue says our land values are. We do everything we can to make sure we are maintaining as many students as we possibly can, but we are like a lot of districts, we have mostly planned out our enrollment, but we are not nearly as big as what we were ten years ago in terms of student enrollment. And then the other big part of that formula, shared costs, AKA costs that we have to operate. And I know from my chair, the business side of things, we try to do everything we can to spend only what we need, but the reality is, is that it costs more to do business on the school side of things, as we all know too. So I want to at least have this as part of our report that I do anticipate a cut in state aid. I'll have the finalized number officially on October fifteenth. Again, not anything to report on.
But it roughly, basically, this budget's been, you know, nine point three million and a half.
It's a large cut, over a million dollars.
How does, how does that affect the numbers yourself here?
That's somewhat baked into it, but this is tough to, this is tough to predict. So that's something that, that we'll have more information on what the local property tax levy is, but I won't officially have it until October fifteenth, when that number gets finalized from the state.
Is that math, though, and I could be wrong here, but if the state reduces it by, we use fifteen percent, but if the equalized value increases fifteen percent, is it a push?
In the eyes of the revenue limit, mil rate potentially yes, but not in the eyes of the actual tax levy. As Kevin alluded to, mil rate is a nice tool to compare district data to district B as much as we can make that apples to apples, for lack of a better term. But the, the local tax levy is what our taxpayers care about. That's what ends up in terms of the school portion on the tax bills that we all get in, in January.
And you're putting out an article in one of the publications going to the...
This is a tough one to explain, yes. I'm kind of waiting for the finalized numbers as opposed to putting projected numbers out there because that gets really important. This is one of those school funding quirks. The reality is, we don't know what our revenues are until October fifteenth. Obviously, our fiscal year starts July one. It's just the way it works. We work off of best guess information. In, in my opinion, I want to make sure that I'm getting real numbers out to our community so we, we know what we're talking about as opposed to projected numbers.
Makes sense.
But I do anticipate that, you know, as I sit here today, a ten to fifteen percent cut in state aid, which is difficult. That's all there is to it. Any questions on that? Otherwise, I got the next one too. Next couple.
Hope to get better.
Let's do item B then, communications received. That's...
Sometimes nothing's better. So I do not have any communications at this point in time.
Item C, budget hearing, annual meeting for September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, seven PM, right here.
Correct. So this is the, as it says, the annual budget meeting and budget hearing. It'll happen in this very room at seven PM. This is another annual process that we do. I will present an annual budget to our community. It is the chance for the community to attend and also provide any kind of general input that they would like as part of all of our budget. But it is, it's comprehensive, it's, it's all of our general fund, it's our special education fund, it's our debt service fund, it's food service, it's community service fund, it's, it's the whole shoot and match. I am there to present. Unfortunately, you're going to hear me talk a lot, so I apologize because normally we kind of played off each other as superintendent and myself, but I will take all speaking parts outside of the board president.
And Jenny, could you please help us? Who are the required board members that need to be present at that? Do you remember?
Do you believe it's the president and treasurer or is it not?
Yes, we usually have, we, we encourage all board members to attend, so it's not a, it's not a school board meeting. There's certain roles that people play within that meeting, but it's not a, it's not a school board.
And it is one of those, just to reiterate, Mr. Fettercutter, it is an opportunity for the community to come, be present, make motions, ask any questions that you want relative to the annual meeting and budget related items.
I encourage community input.
Yeah. All right. Item D, the WASB Region One meeting on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five in Ashland.
This one's been on here a couple of times. It is our, our Region One meeting. I know, I think everybody maybe has been to one of these through the WASB. I know that the, the registration deadline is probably approaching, so if you wish to attend, historically, we, we get a nice school van, we all meet somewhere, and those people that get carsick and want to drive themselves can. But if you are interested, please let Ms. Keller know as soon as you possibly can so we can get you registered for that. It's usually been an hour long presentation, if I remember correctly, they do feed you. We would make the rundown to, to Ashland, if you can make it.
And they usually do a, some form of training beforehand if a person was so interested in learning more about the ins and outs of school boarding.
I'm just concerned, who's, who's driving with a VU or...
Depends on how fast you get there.
It makes a difference.
We'll, we'll draw some straws.
Funny guy. All right. Item B, the maintenance update. I would expect that you all got them. Any questions? Want to...
Yeah, a lot of moving parts right now. Um, obviously, a lot of it was building up to get our buildings open. Our students are here. But it's listed there. Um, it, it's really a lot of preseason, first part of school year work. Finalization of some of the summer maintenance projects. We, we do certainly try to get all of those done before our students arrive for, for everybody's sake, where the contractors aren't tripping over the students and the students aren't getting interested in what the contractors are doing sometimes. Um, so that's listed there. I won't read it word for word. You have it, but pretty typical stuff. Nothing out of the norm.
All right. Next item, the WASB correspondence and legislative update. I'm not sure who's...
It's me. All right. So if you feel so inclined to contact your legislators, the Assembly Committee on Local Government will hold an executive session. A vote to move a bill out of committee next week on Assembly Bill one ninety-six, legislation that would allow Wisconsin retirees and some retirees to return to work without suspending their annuity. Um, this committee vote is a critical step to getting this bill to the Assembly floor. There is expected to be limited floor session opportunities remaining, uh, this legislative session. Um, they're hoping that this bill can be used as a tool to help schools dealing with staffing challenges. Um, it also included a link to, um, a tool that the WASB team had developed, um, to help communicate regarding state budget, um, with local communities. So there, the link is in the report there that you can just click on. Um, it's a document designed to provide high level summaries of the budget's impact on local school districts because it is even for those of us who sit in this room all the time, still very confusing. Um, new legislation, I won't go through all of this, but I did include it for you just so you can kind of see, um, kind of what is coming up. So, um, new legislation introduced over the summer, rescinding the governor's four-hundred year veto, um, regarding the, um, three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil adjustment until twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, immunization waivers regarding different immunizations for kids in schools. Um, the school bus safety package, um, which allows, um, for different driver, um, requirements based on age, um, equipment of school buses, an audio visual recording devices, driver's education, et cetera. Um, pre-budget legislation has a real chance of passing, um, the removing of impediments of, of, of rehiring retired workers. Um, higher education and data collection requiring boards to distribute information, um, amending academic excellence scholarships. Um, and then a tribal relations package, student health and safety measures. Um, and then there's also a list of things that are on the docket, but likely won't pass. Important to watch. Um, so I did include all of that information in the packet, um, for you to read, in case you haven't had a chance to go to the WSB, WASB website and...
I took everything that you gave us. Read it all.
You could have given the report.
No. Do you have any more? Are you good?
Nope.
All right. Uh, CISA twelve.
CISA twelve, we did our August meeting. Um, we had an update on the summer training that CISA twelve put on for, uh, school district staff and how well it was attended. It was very well attended. Um, we had a presentation, a data dash, dashboard that has been created by CISA twelve to monitor for district, for CISA twelve districts to monitor and track the implementation of services they have purchased. District personnel will be able to see which CISA staff are assigned to their district for services purchased and services funded through grants and contracts. They can see how days purchased are being utilized. Information on the dashboard will be updated in real time as consultants enter their data. Um, they have been contacted by DPI to create similar, a similar dashboard that will track, um, network supports to district, districts with federal identifications under SA, Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, we also got an update on CISA twelve's five-year strategic plan. This was the completing the third year. Nick Madison shared an end-of-year report on strategic plan measurements and they did meet all of their third-year benchmarks. Um, the final one was a facility plan that outlines some improvements and other items that CISA twelve will work on within several years. Uh, most items will be covered within their operating budget. There's the CISA twelve report.
Right on. Item H, donations.
Uh, busy time of year for the donations. Um, we're thankful to all of these folks that help, um, our students ultimately. So thank you to Mission Covenant Church for their donations of school supplies to NES and IRES. Uh, various churches, there's numerous ones here, but, uh, that supply, school supply donations to NES. There's even unknown donors, sort of people drop off for school supplies in NES. Pat Henon for the donation of backpacks to NES. Lori Ronke for the donation of chairs to the NMS library. The Rural Lions Club for donation of school supplies to NMS. And the NMS Decorating Committee for the Open House decorations. Um, I saw them, they were great. Um, also, I, we want to give a, a public thank you to the family of Terry Hendrickson for the memorial donations to the athletic department and also the family of Clyde Grubel for the memorial donations to the football program. So that has been a, um, maybe a new trend, but something that I know Mr. Smith, um, definitely appreciates and it does go back to our, our programs. Other than that, that is the donations report. Busy time of year. We are very, very thankful for the, for all our, uh, community supports.
Yeah, extremely grateful. Item I, reports from the Northwestern Elementary and Iron Rivers Elementary Schools, middle school, high school, athletic and activities directors, special education directors. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of that? Uh, before I get to the next one, I would like Mr. Fettuccine Connor to give us a bit of a reprise, I think, on the transportation. We, we changed some stuff, I think, the beginning of the year, first day or two went a little not as smooth as we had hoped, but you guys had, it sounded like made some changes and I think it's worth, uh, sharing that.
Yeah, so, uh, we've, we've tried to adjust, for lack of a better term, the, I'll call it the pickup schedule. Um, last year to kind of put it in perspective, every one of our, at that point in time, seventeen buses came to this building. This was, we started at NES, pick up the middle school, and then we'd come to the high school. Um, the realities are, is that all of our buses were turning left onto Highway Two and some would go left, come here, pick up a student or two, and then go back right to the, the western part of our district. The reality is, is most high schools, that the fewest number of riders are typically at the high school level because at least usually half of our students are, are licensed to drive. So we met, this goes back, um, into last year actually, about how can we try to improve busing our students who are on the bus for a long period of time without ever actually going home? So we adjusted to have the middle school be the transition for the buses. Um, what we had found is that we just didn't have enough time to get, right now currently running two buses to pick up the riders from the high school, get them to the middle school to make their transfers. Um, the middle school ended at three twenty-five, the high school ended at three twenty-five, and of course, there was, we haven't figured out how to get from here to the middle school in point two seconds, although they are efficient to get out of this building, I would say, Mr. Smith. They're ready to go, aren't they?
What about you?
So we met to try to streamline this process. Um, today was the first day of it. I'm gonna maybe lean on my administrators to help me with this, but we decided to end, take five minutes off of advisory period, which doesn't impact the educational day for our students, um, and dismissed at three twenty at the high school in order to buy the five minutes to get the buses from here down there to get them going. Um, I believe I heard we were on the road at about three thirty-two.
Yeah, we cleared the parking lot at three thirty-one. A lot of cars, from the middle school all the way over to elementary, so cleared that by three thirty-one, which would have been six minutes or less, and then the wheels on the bus. And because we can do that now, we get all those cars out of there so that the buses can leave without cars getting in front of them, turning left or right, and the wheels on the bus will be going at three forty-two as opposed to last week, four forty-two. So, um, we're starting to really get to where we need to be. And I want to give accolades to our NS and Stacy Cadalli. They've been phenomenal as well. And thank Mr. Smith for helping us all from the high school side and Ms. Larrabee has been riding the bus over just to make sure that their physical lungs are transitioning over well and, uh, it's, it's impressive to see everything happen. Like it's like an airport with a bunch of connecting flights happening and you've got kindergarten through twelfth grade changing flights, if you will. So, um, and I, I give credit to the teachers too, elementary school teachers are walking their students out to make sure that kids aren't getting run over and, I mean kids, I give credit to the kids and they're doing a great job of doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we're proud of everybody.
Is that five minutes they get them from high school gonna affect?
It won't affect ours. We've run that. Uh, Mr. Smith, I don't know if you want to chime in, it's your building, so.
Five or six hours.
So we're good there. It's the best case scenario right now, the, the amount of logistics, no pun intended, that we have to, to bus our students. We have sixteen, we call regular routes, three special education routes. Um, and anywhere from four years old up to eighteen years old potentially riding the bus. So, um, kudos to all of our teams, transportation department, bus drivers, administration, and then the teachers that are helping get those kids on those connecting flights. It is a, a sight to see if you ever want to come down and watch. We, we roll about a hundred and fifty cars through there and, uh, a whole number of buses.
And I do, the, the bus drivers, I hope they spend a small day down and do a small job. They, they need to step down as long as the buses are off, you know, to help out, that they, they're understanding how quickly they need to move and they've just been incredible. So, and thanks to Joe Fettuccine Connor for helping us problem solve so we could get home, get kids home safer and get our buses on the road safer and get our families on the roads and just, and get that. So it feels real good. Just get their safe route.
And I would expect in the next week or two, it's gonna continue to get more efficient. And I would then expect that at the same time, we're gonna get students home sooner.
Yes, that's the ultimate goal, right? Yes, we want to, we have very large districts and the unfortunate truth is that there's going to be time on buses, but we're, we're trying to, as best as we possibly can, make that ride time as short as we possibly can. So Stacy Cadalli and our NS down at Transportation work wonders that way.
And I think today, I heard it was already down to fifteen minutes last, so a few times that each day per week, per month, per year.
Last year, we were not leaving, uh, kids were going home until about three forty-five from here. From here. Yes.
And also the littles are on the bus so much longer. They'd be sitting, getting on the bus from the elementary and sitting there for a long time, then coming over to the next door and sitting for a long time. So get them on the bus and get them home.
Very good. Thank you for that information. Uh, student staff and community recognition.
I don't know if we want to jump to our student reports or not.
Well, if you want to do this, this one that we've got, we'll finish with them. Let them be the highlight of our meeting.
I just didn't want to, you guys have been great. Good time to shine. Um, real quick, I'm, I'm gonna not take the, the kudos for this, but I want to congratulate the area staff. Ms. Larrabee is here for, uh, being a Wisconsin School of Recognition. So, Mr. Larrabee, I'll let you...
So to make it official, last year, you may recall, I sent out some information that , uh, Iron River was identified again as a, um, school of recognition. So the particular award that they got was one of twenty-four schools at the elementary level in the state. So if you think of roughly two thousand elementary schools, that's pretty prestigious. So Iron River got the formal recognition, so I'll pass this around. Uh, this will go in the office. If you happen to be over there, you can accept that and the other awards that are hanging there. Uh, so as Cody said, the, uh, the really recognition falls on the community, the families and our staff at Iron River because that's based off of the student growth for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and how much they grew during the school year is what led to that award. And like I said, being one of twenty-four is a pretty amazing feat, so we have a lot to do about it. So if anybody in the audience is out there listening, if there's any of the teens still there, please stop at the elementary school and check out and say thank you to our teachers and our amazing community down there.
What grade was it?
Good question. So that's actually based off of the Wisconsin Forward Exam. So it's those data sets, so you're a young man, be one of those.
That's why I was asking.
Yep. So it's that data set as they came up and took the assessment in the spring of twenty-four, uh, so first, first, uh, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So that information then follows over and, uh, it shows how much the, the kids have grown throughout the year and then the following years when they get the recognitions.
He, he probably pulled them over.
Well...
You're saying?
Absolutely.
Brian knows my case, I can...
Thank you for the time to recognize it. If there's any questions, happy days.
It's just, just nice to know that you're continuing to perform not just that level, but...
Absolutely, absolutely. And when you can hang the governor's name on the wall, that's a good thing.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, sir. All right. And then our, uh, student representatives, let's, uh, see what you got.
All right. So as the fall sports kick off, I'd like to bring in some of the health school and team spin up too. So in volleyball, uh, they traveled to the Great Rivers Brawl in, it's on Alaska.
Nailed it.
Really nervous about that word. Uh, they went five-two, clinching, is it clinching? That word is really tricky for me. The bronze bracket championship and finishing ninth out of the twenty-fourth team in the event. During the, on Alaska, Shelby Hassel, the volleyball captain, achieved a major milestone by recording her one thousandth career dig during this tournament, becoming one of, only in, one of the second players in Northwestern's program history to reach that mark. In Thursday matchup against Superior, we went up to the Great Effort by unlimiting, oh, sorry, unlimitedly fell in four sets. Um, we held our group and scores in the games, the score of the games, sorry guys, being twenty-five, eighteen, twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-three. They will continue to practice and then for the next game, and that'll be on the road to Amory against Clear Lake. With that, the girls' golf has already up and started and they had their last meet, I think last Thursday, and Grace Schmidt got a fifty, which is first place, and Reagan got a fifty-four, which is, I believe, third, she got third place. Um, and they have an infight this Thursday at their home course of Hidden Green. Um, moving forward to the football team, we are off at a hot three-zero start of the season with convincing wins over Somerset, twenty-seven, fourteen, Prescott, forty-seven, and Spooner, thirty-five to seven. None of the games have been especially close and the teams have shown being competitive and collaborative. After talking with one of the captains, Ethan Harms, he mentioned that the offensive and defense lines have made up entirely of seniors, bringing experience and cohesion into the season. He also mentioned that the field off, they have been hosting team dinners, uh, for better chemistry with teammates. This week is our first home game and they will be taking on the St. Cross Falls. Ooh, and as for cost country, they have competed in two, sorry, they competed in two meets so far, one in Superior and one in Ashland. The boys' teams are particularly impressive, especially amongst freshman runners. I feel like I'm gonna butcher these names. Lex Gusterin and Ellie earned top twenty finishes in the second meet. Posting super strong times, Hunter Frederickson continues to shine individually and considered a strong competitor for state qualifications. The girls' team is off to a solid start and shows consistent improvement. Despite being a young roster, they are running competitive times and the teams is eager to prepare for their upcoming meets. That's what I have for the sports area of the school.
All right. Moving on, I've got clubs and activities for you guys. There's not much for clubs since we just started the school year, but I'll give you what I can. Last Friday, we held a, a little, what's it called? Presentation in the auditorium to encourage students to sign up for different things and try new things. Um, and today was actually when the club fair was hosted, which is where students can go around and sign up for other various clubs. And, oh, actually, there's, um, over the summer, the bass fishing team, um, did multiple like, um, competitions and things. And just recently, I think it was this past weekend, Finley Nelson and Jack Miggas went down to Lake Hamadeu in Alexandria, Minnesota, and they competed for state. And the clubs that are held year round will be meeting at some point this month to discuss their individual agendas. FCA will kick this off with their hosting of their first morning meeting on this Friday. Additionally, um, with our other activities, our drama crew has begun the productions of this year's one act. Um, for the first competition piece, it's called Small Actors. Um, auditions were already held and roles were cast. Rehearsals started tonight and both of the district and subject, um, district competitions are going to be held there during this October. Um, dates have not been yet selected, but they are working on it. Um, they will also be putting on another show called Apostrophies, which will be performed alongside that during the night of one acts in November, on November eighteenth. Um, pairing with the theatrics, this year's musical, Mama Mia, was announced early in